Welcome everybody to this on the board of November 26th, 28th. My name is Marty Aitken from Chairman. This is Board Member Mr. Hamill, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien. Behind me, the Director of Inspection Services, Mr. Conlon. And this is our Clerk, Mrs. Noonan. If you have a cellphone, please put it on silent not to interrupt the meeting. You're going to talk, please step outside. Can I have a motion to waive the minutes in the reading?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the minutes as presented November 14th, 2023. Second.
On the motion, stand out all in favor.
Aye.
Both are moved. We have a problem here. There's four people here tonight. So every person has a chance to either wait till there's five or go ahead with four. If you go ahead with four and you lose one, you will lose. So you vary. So take it over and I'll call them one at a time. First of all, ZBA 2354, Jack Milgram. I have a letter here from the lawyer who wants to move to February 6th, 2024.
Can we hold off a second? Do you swear people in?
Yeah, but I just wanted to move this one through.
Okay, the matter is, ZBA dash 23 dash 54, Jack Milgram, variance and special permit flood plan to construct a single family home. This existing, existing open lot on the premises numbered 54 Spring Street Quincy. Make a motion to continue to February 6th, 2024. Second.
On the motion, stand out all in favor.
Aye.
Both are moved. So I'm going to go through each case and then, then you can take a note if you want to speak. The new business, 192 Bellevue. You hear? It's, uh, there's four people now. If you lose one, or you just go ahead or you wait?
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead. 44 Caruth Street. Want to go ahead or wait till five?
I'm here.
Okay.
Go for it.
Go for it, he says. 503 Quincy Ave. The applicant, 503 Quincy Ave. There's only four of us.
Yes.
It's up to you if you want to go ahead or wait till it's five.
Is it someone on the way or they're not here?
No, they're not here. I called the meeting, neither.
Is the policy, David Mahoney for the applicant, is it the policy of the board that at the next meeting, that person could be read in so they could vote?
No.
So if we made a presentation tonight and continued it?
No.
No?
No.
Can I talk to my client?
Sure.
Thanks.
12 Summit Ave. Want to go ahead or you want to? Well, they're going to be, well, let's go ahead. New Business, case number 2368. If anyone's going to testify tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand. You have to take a note to testify. If you think you might testify, just take a note.
Never know.
Never know. All right, never know.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth and the matter now I'm here?
Yes.
Thank you, you've received it.
Case number 2368. Kim Devine for variance to subdivide the lot into two lots and construct a single family home in the vacant lot in front of 192 Bellevue Road. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes.
You have the floor. Name and address for the record, please.
Kim Devine, 52 Essex Street, Squanton.
Why don't you tell us exactly what you want to build, what you want to do?
So we are planning to subdivide the lot of the family home at 192 Bellevue Road. It belongs to my parents so that our family can move and be closer to them as the parents get aged and having health issues. We were asking for some variances where we're a little bit short on the lot size and the setbacks and what's on the application there.
And how big is the house going to be?
So the 1,800 square feet, two stories, two plus with the top, two stories. Yep. So it's a four bedroom, two bath house, but we're planning on only using three bedrooms. There was an issue about the parking and we have no problem excluding one bedroom to accommodate that because it will be for a family of three, obviously two or three. 1,823 square feet, four bedrooms, two and a half baths, two stories.
And how many parking spaces do you have?
So we will have minimum three. It's a two car garage, but I was informed by Building Department that it's a couple feet short, so we have no problem just going with the three spots. We can either, we can either widen the garage from the plans that we bought or we can limit it to three because there's really only going to be one or two adults living in the house with vehicles.
It doesn't really matter who's going to live there now, who's going to live there later and after that and after that. So, you know, I know people want them.
So there's three official, there's more than enough to meet the code for three official parking spots.
I really don't have any questions because to me the lot's a little small and everyone around there has 11, 12, 14, 15,000 square feet. I just think it's, we change the structure of the neighborhood. That's, that's my opinion. That's just my opinion.
So I have some cases here where houses have been built on smaller lots in the last few years.
Every lot's different. Every lot is different. Every, every, every variance is different.
So every lot is different and this, this lot, the way that it's set up is a very, pretty, pretty square rectangle lot. We cut into a nice square lot, plenty of length, and we got a very narrow home, 23 feet wide. So it's not going to change the looks. It's going to fit right in with the family. There's a picture of the house that you can look at.
I understand, believe me. I've been here over 20 years, I guess. I do get it and I understand the neighborhoods. I'm just telling you how I feel right now. Let's hear from the neighborhood. Does anyone have any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Any questions?
Um, no questions. A statement. I don't, I don't recall ever voting in favor of creating a lot that didn't meet the standards with and frontage, which this one doesn't meet. So it's going to be difficult for me to, uh, to look at this.
All right, let's hear from the neighborhood. You can have a seat.
We've been there over 40 years and we have no problem parking, no problem.
I get that.
As you know, half the houses there are 5,000 square feet or less.
I get it.
Even though I know it's 7,500 now. And the three houses she has right here, to answer your question, the three houses right there, those did not have.
He's talking about the frontage specifically though, not just the lot size.
Yeah, well, this, these houses here did not.
Now, if you want to look up these addresses for your information.
In about three years, they didn't have the frontage that you were talking about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, call on a high hand close. I got a letter here from the CPW. He's on.
To Marty Aitken, Chairman, zoning board of appeals, Sum T Sang, civil engineer, November 3rd, 2023, 192 Bellevue. We've reviewed the submittal for the above referenced project and our comments are as follow. One, provide calculations to show increased runoff from the development will not adversely affect the butter's properties or install two 500 gallon of drywall to handle the increased runoff. Two, provide plans showing the layout of utility and grading. Three, install survey monuments to delineate the subdivision. The monument shall be set by professional surveyor. Number four, upon completion of the project, as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file. If further information is required, please advise.
Thank you. My opposition, anyone opposed on the side, please come up. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Owen Kill Cullen. I'm the owner of property 1214 Sycamore Road. So as a regular butter basically to the property, I have actually filed a memorandum and I have some coffees here also.
Sure.
I can deliver, distribute those.
Yeah, if you could just give me them, that'd be great. Hold them up.
Yep.
Thank you.
My clerk.
Hey, how are you?
Yeah.
So what I'd like to do is just actually go over the main objections essentially. Okay. So as I, as I mentioned, okay, I'm a director butter to the property located 192 Bellevue, submitting this memorandum in opposition to the above named caption. A couple of things regarding the actual application. So the applicant says, okay, to build an additional single family home to accommodate closer family living arrangements. Also that the relief consists of some minor variations to size and setback requirements and the planned home will become complement existing neighborhood being built in the style and manner of projects in the area. In response, I'd like to actually bring the following points up. So the applicant has failed to actually state a statutory hardship for variance approval and fails in the application to take into consideration the following material major issues. One, the applicant seeks approval to create two undersized lots in the Residence A neighborhood. These proposed lots consist of square footage of 5,433 square feet and 6,466 square feet and are a major deviation from the required lot square footage in the Quincy Residence A of 7,7,650 square feet. Secondly, the applicant states her need for variance to build an additional single family home is to accommodate closer family living arrangements and arrangements. In the commonwealth of mass, it is well settled in case law that personal hardship, however heartrending, is not proper for the variance approval. Point three, the applicant states the planned home will complement the existing neighborhood, excuse me, being built in the style of manner projects in the area. This home will not complement the existing neighborhood but will congest and cause drainage issues in the well-established Residence A neighborhood. Case law in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has demonstrated the proximity of the land to other non-conforming users is not a statutory hardship. But for the proposed application, the existing home of 192 Bellevue will now become a non-conforming structure per the existing rules and regulations of the city of Quincy Building and Zoning Code. Point five, the parking will be inadequate because for the existing home, due to the fact that busy Bellevue Road cannot accommodate on street parking and the existing home will lose its parking space on Sycamore Road and will only have one off-street parking space on Bellevue. And this will further add to congestion in the general area. The parking proposed, point six, the parking proposed for the new home is located in the front setback, not in the rear. And this, you know, the section, basically the ordinance regarding paving regards applies. Point seven, there is a mature Sycamore tree is proposed to be removed from the backyard of 192 Road, Bellevue Road, but the applicant fails to address the city of Quincy tree ordinance as well as provide a landscape and drainage plan with the application. Lastly, point eight, Sycamore Road is narrow and parking from the present home and proposed home will cause significant impact in the area of public safety. In summary, the proposed project will be substantially more detrimental to the Sycamore Road Bellevue neighborhood. We believe that, you know, Mr. Devine has failed to provide a statutory hardship for approval for zoning relief and that if approval is granted, obviously would open the gates for other landlord owners in the city of Quincy Residence A districts to build homes in their grounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Opposed on the side? Second call? One letter, one letter of proposal and another one about questions about trees. There's two here.
From Diane Callahan, 35, Sycamore Road, Squanton. November 27th, attention Kathy Noonan, good morning. Your email is not admissible without your name and address, which is required for the record. Thank you, have a nice day. Construction of a house 192 Bellevue. I am opposed to the project as I do not believe a building, a house in a backyard does anything for property value. On the street, Sycamore Road is very narrow, small street parking is already a premium, although plans say parking provided. You know how plans play out. People are entitled to park in the street and have guests. Property values, parking ambience, all affected reasons I oppose the project. Case number, ZBA 2368, 192 Bellevue, from Keith Johnson. Regarding the application for a two non-conforming lots, my main concern is the potential loss of trees along Sycamore Road. Squanton has been losing mature trees at an alarming rate due to shoehorn development. These Sycamore trees must be preserved and protected during the work so that our street can continue to be named Sycamore Road.
Last call. Opposed on the side, all are bowing here and close. You know, it's like there's, there's, every area in that city is different and right where that house is, at 11,000 square foot lot you're going to take and you're going to make two non-conforming lots. When across the street, there's probably, I don't know how big that guy is, gigantic. The one on the other side is gigantic. That one's a nice sized 11,000 lot. You're going to lose that. To me, you're going to lose that. You're going to lose that in the city. And I can't vote in favor if that's what we're going to do in the city. They can fear the neighborhood, it's not fear of the neighbors. So I'll be voting no. Comment, ma'am?
I'll be voting no as well. I do not believe, as stated by Kim Devine, that this is a minor variation to lot size. I think it's a large variation and I'll be voting no.
I'm voting no as well. It's insufficient lot size. The trend in the city is not to make lots, little lots, smaller, but to make them larger, losing green space. This is a residential A zone and I've never voted for a division of a residential A lot to become two lots.
I'd like to speak.
I also want to say, I also want to say that based on the plot plan you provided, it looks like there's a sizable structure either on or over your right side border, which would, I think, make it even tighter should you decide to build on that, on that lot. So voting no.
Mr. O'Brien, comments?
Same, similar. We're not even close to any of the requirements, so.
All right. You see the vote's going to vote no. I will give you the opportunity to withdraw without prejudice, which means you can't come back in two years or you have to completely change your project.
Yes, I'd like to.
Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, ZBA dash 2368, Kim Devine for variance, 192 Bellevue Road, Quincy Ave, two, withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, stand out all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose? So further on to tonight's agenda. Z, oh, question on 503, we didn't finish.
Talked to my client, Mr. Chairman, and they'd like to postpone it till the next meeting.
Okay.
So I'd like to make an oral motion to postpone till the next meeting.
Yeah, let me, what do we have, the 12th though? Because now in January, how many, how many on that agenda?
15.
Hmm? I know that's, that's going to be the big one with Gertrude. As long as we have, yeah. Four, five. Yeah, all right. You know what? Let's put it in. Let's put it in, December 12th.
The 12th?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
12th.
Like to make a motion, ZBA dash 23 dash 80, David P. Mahoney Esquire, for variance, special permit and special permit slash flood plan to operate a recreational marijuana retail establishment on the premises numbered 503 Quincy Ave, Quincy. Make a motion to postpone it till 12, 12, 23.
Second.
On the motion, stand out all in favor.
Aye.
All right, both, promote. ZBA 2376, Barney Tan for variance to demolish existing single family home, construct two three-story, two-unit loan homes on the premises number 44 Caruth Street. The applicant a representative here?
Yes.
And something about a set of plans were mailed yesterday?
The drawing was submitted along with the permit, it was the only, but I do have a problem.
Let me see that you have, that's the one I have.
This is exactly.
Maybe she didn't know we got it already and it was up because it's the one I have.
So, pretty name, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jim Chen. I'm the architect, the JCTT architect. So this, this project has been heard back before, earlier this year by the zoning board and was perceived unfavorably due to the size of the proposal. The previous proposal calls for a six unit, two separate buildings, and since then, we withdrew the project without prejudice and went back to the drawing board and came back with a new proposal. We sent out the plan to the war council, but I have not heard anything back from Council panel, which is PCT or connect.
Yeah, I never got it.
Yep. I never got it.
All right, give him a sec, please, so he can look at it where you're talking. And council, if you need more time to think this over because you just got him, just let You know, if you need time, we can always move it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at these now.
That's what I mean.
And I did not, I'm very careful with my calls, I'm very careful with my emails. I don't, you know, I haven't done anything on this. I got, I got calls from the neighbors.
Yeah.
Because they sent out a letter to me.
Okay.
To let them know it was coming up.
Right.
But this, this is the first I, I haven't really.
First you've seen in four years?
First I've seen.
Yeah. All right, put in your presentation, we can, we'll let you speak last. How's that?
Okay.
Thank you, Congressman.
So this subject property is in Rest C with a lot size of 12,491 square feet. It's located at the end of the, at the end of Caruth Street. It butts the MBTA property on the right side, single multifamily dwellings and the abutting properties. So the new proposal is actually at a reduced scale in size, a four unit in two separate buildings. It's a three-story with frame construction with two-car garage under and two little floors above. Each unit consists of two bedroom plus ten with two and a half bathroom, approximately 1,900 square feet per unit of living space. We provide a total of 12 parking spaces on site in which eight of them are in garage, four on, on the outside where nine is required for zoning, for zoning. So the applicant is seeking multiple variances on the minimum lot size, front yard setback, and Article 4.2.2, two building on the same lot and insufficient turning radius. What we have is two driveway. One driveway is only 20 feet wide where 24 feet wide is required serving two homes and the other driveway is also 20 feet wide serving the other two. The applicant will also need endorsement from the MBTA upon the ZBA approval.
Say that again.
MBTA endorsement will be needed because it's abutting the, their lot. We would also need required, required planning board, site planning board. So I hope you take this into consideration.
Uh, you know, and, and I know it's at the end of the street now and where it is, I don't know, I've flipped it around. I know it's too big before and you've done what the board asked you to do. And it's, and it's, you said there were two bedrooms each, correct?
Two bedrooms.
And that's more my style. I just want to hear from the council and his people, but like we take those single family homes with two family homes, try to put six units on. You can't even get out of Quincy and we're doing this to quality streets. It's brutal. It's really brutal. It took me 55 minutes to get from house neck to the highway this morning. And it's taken the railroad. Why? Construction down there one lane, construction over here one lane, bazaar, bazaar. Three constructions on the way to the highway. I don't know who planned that out there. It wasn't very smart up there, whether it was, but cutting up a street here, cutting up a street down the street and cutting up a street going down, down to the highway and moving everyone over and over. And it's just, it was just bizarre, but that's what we're doing. We're congesting these places and smaller areas and really shooting. I don't know why someone can't come up with like a nice, beautiful, three, three, three unit building with yard space and this and not tiring the whole place and not tiring both sides and then building to both sides. I just, what are we doing? It's, it really, we got to stop somewhere. We all got to stop somewhere. I get it. I get it. I get it. You got to build, you need something to build to make your money or you're not going to even come out. I get it, believe me, I get it. I get, I get the car. We've got to start thinking a little better, I think, all of us. Those are my comments right now. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions, can I comment?
Go ahead.
The, you're right, and that's the end of the street, but it doesn't but the T, so it only impacting two neighbors in there, but.
Oh, I know. I know what you mean.
I think, I think that's a little too dense for that, to come up out of there. I mean, the traffic in there in the morning and in the afternoon with the slow, two blocks away is.
I don't even know who would want to live down there. It's at the end of that street, but the T goodbye all night.
Yeah.
And then you're working the traffic.
Well, when it works.
That's another.
They're, they're still buying them like.
I know that. Anyway, getting Quincy, I know that. The costs, those aren't going to be cheap. Is anyone want to speak in favor right now? First call? Second call? Third call? We have a letter from the CPW.
Okay.
Right into the record.
To, Mr. Chairman, from civil engineer, November 20th, 23, 44 Caruth Street. We have reviewed and submitted for the above referenced project and comments below. Greeting and drainage, confirm the layout of the proposed drainage system. If the 180 units are arranged, it's, this doesn't seem right. 180 units?
Hit the right address.
Yeah. 44 Caruth. Boy, you're really squeezing them in.
Talking all over the wedding.
Well, I, I, I think they made a mistake on that.
Might be a crew's manhole.
Yeah, there's something wrong here. I don't think we should read this.
It's just a minor mistake.
No, it's all, it's awful way through it. It's, it ruined it.
We'll get a new letter to put in the. Yeah, it's, I was starting to read this, but I didn't get.
I thought it was my eyes.
No, your eyes are good, John.
Is there anyone opposed on the side? Step up, name and address for the record. I mean, people that own it probably, the T was never there.
My name's John McCarty. I live at 23 Caruth Street.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the views you have on them. You know, just trying to control the growth in Quincy. It is, you know, it's like, I think we should have a long, a long range plan of what we want it to look like. But in this neighborhood, this is a very narrow street. There's 16 homes on the street, 11 single family, four two-family and one four-family. There's, there's one single family home that does not have a driveway. It's, it used to be, it used to be there, but it's not used anymore and a couple is elderly, so they park their three vehicles on the street. There's a two-family where there's parking for one vehicle and they have three vehicles. And then there's the four-family at the end of the street, which has no parking. So they're all on the street. So there are approximately 12. So, there are approximately twenty-one spaces for vehicles up and down the street.
They park around the corner there, on that...
On Hancock and...
Yeah, and the Little Dirt Road.
The Little Dirt Road.
Yeah, they, they pass through, but nobody really parks there overnight.
No? I was down in there today, so...
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the other thing is, you know, then there's the dentist, there's a dentist office at the end of the street, and they only have...
Where is that?
Right at the corner of Caruth and Hancock.
Yeah.
Oh, the other one, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they only have, they have a little spot behind them off Caruth that can, they can pack in about six cars, they do a good job. But they also, like where there's one parking spot between driveways, they make it two. And there was an incident last week where I couldn't get my pickup truck out of the driveway because they were so close, and there was, the street's not wide enough. But I just, it's just, yeah, I don't know what people are gonna do about the parking. There's not going to be spaces for people, they already said, you know, there's people in the neighborhood, someone in the four-family, I don't know how many vehicles they have, but she said she's a handicapped person, and she can't park near her house half the time, so...
That's the council's question, she's, she's...
Yeah, yeah.
Parking sign put right up there.
You're right, and we already have one set up on the street for that. So, it's just the parking is at a premium on that street. And that's my biggest concern, but, you know, I appreciate these, the original one was a six-unit building, and it looked very commercial, at least this one sounds more residential.
It does.
And we've got a house that's kind of rotting at the end of the street right now. And, you know, something needs to be done.
Something's gotta go in there.
Something's gotta go in. They do have some nice, nice parking, that's, that's a good thing, as you know.
Yeah. I can appreciate what you said about finding, you know, just, people, just be more creative and make attractive residences, you know, that will really bring people in.
Those square buildings.
Yeah. That's all.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Well, I've been sitting here, Kevin heard, I can't hear you, so you're gonna hear me.
Name an address for the record.
What?
Name an address for the record.
I haven't got to that part, my name's Carol Seketti, and I live at nineteen Caruth Street. I've lived there fifty-four years.
Oh.
Okay, I've seen a lot in time, I've seen the house that's being taken down from a fire and stole, I don't know how many times, that is in question here. I can't get out of my street, I'm cautious because I'm eighty-one years old, I check my time because I, they race to a red light on Freddis Row. Probably a speeding sign would be nice. I always say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," and they pass me by. I just don't know how we can circumvent all these problems when, like John spoke of, the dentist, I've had them park in my driveway, yeah, I've had them, I've gone out to them in the street and said, they park on the other side, and say, "You can't do that." And I understand, this is a new country and things that they have to learn, and I'm just, I'm not being just biased on that because we see everything, but the neighborhood is such that, as I say, I've seen it for so many years, everyone gets along, everybody watches each other's property. I know the other cars, I know all their company, you know, and I just feel like, to, to build, first of all, I can't even imagine going into a place like that with the train track at my back, you know? As a woman, I would not want that, that would be a first no-no for me, but somebody will buy it, perhaps.
They will.
They will.
And, and, and you, and you know, you drive around Quincy and it's, I tell my siblings, you would not know Quincy, you know? A lot to the better, folks done a good job.
Yep.
And I voted for him, but I just, I'm frustrated that we can't seem to get the traffic squared away so we can get off and not get killed, I'd like to live a few more years.
We get smaller roads, and that's the problem.
Smaller what?
We have small roads.
Yeah, yes, we do, in fact, the fire engine had difficulties getting to that house to put the fire out.
Right.
Okay? And I live like in the middle part, but I don't know what the solution is, and, and I'm sorry, I sat here, I didn't know, I heard your voice, I didn't hear anyone else's voice, it's very difficult.
Yeah.
You know? What are microphones for?
Yeah, they're working.
You can't hear them, honestly, we were sit, that's why we came down front, because up back...
Maybe you gotta get closer?
Yeah, up back, you can't hear at all, so, I'm just putting my, I vote, I put my hand up.
Yeah?
And I just wanted to say, good luck. Really.
Thank you, I understand. About the, I just wanna know what construction you know?
No, I didn't. All right, KZBA dash twenty-three, section six, forty-four Caruth Street. Forty-two Gilmore Street condo association respectfully re-submits the following questions for the zoning board of appeals, meeting scheduled for eleven twenty-eight, twenty-three. How long is a construction project expected to last? What is the anticipated completion date? How will the city address the impact of tra, of traffic in the surrounding streets? For example, will the city pave the short dirt road across from the constructions connecting Caruth and Gilmore Streets to accommodate the additional volume of traffic going to and from the new property? Thanks, Markel Alfonso Chairman and Gail March Treasurer.
Last call, anyone opposed on the side?
My name is Lloyd Fontaine, and I live at thirty-eight Caruth Street, right next door to forty-four Caruth Street. And I really don't have that much to say in all honesty, because I think the appeals board, the Department of Public Works, and the planning board, with the letter that they had last time, pretty much covered it all regarding to the concerns that our neighbors have. It started back in two thousand and eighteen, when they wanted to have a sixth-unit building, they wanted to knock the building down, make six units, and have twelve parking spaces there. There was a great opposition from our neighbors. And when people came by and we told them what the developer wanted to do, just looking at it, you could tell that it just did not fit, but for somehow, on paper, it worked. But when you look at it, you can tell it's not gonna work. And last time at the meeting, I thank you very much for addressing all the issues that were a concern of the neighbors. You discussed the MBTA, we had a solid rock in the backyard, too much traffic in, in the neighborhood, you covered water, drainage, and a multitude of things. And it was my understanding that it was not going to pass. I also had the understanding, and I probably misunderstood it, that if they wanted to come back, it had to come back in two years, but maybe I misunderstood that.
Unless the project is completely different, it's, it's four units.
Okay. So, anyways, I, I thought there's a great concern due to many different issues that are involved. And I, again, when people look at their property, and you're telling them how many cars they want to put, or how many units, it's very difficult to see, but for somehow, it works on paper, which doesn't make any sense to me. Now, I have actually a couple pictures here, and I would like to show them to you, if I may.
Sure.
And it's pictures of the neighborhood. And I, and I don't wanna insult anybody, I know everybody's familiar with the neighborhood, you know what the neighborhood looks like. But for some reason, again, on paper, things look different. This is actually a couple pictures of the neighborhood, and it's a picture of the dirt road that connects Gilmore Street and Caruth Street. And this is actually from Google, and I apologize for the quality of it, but it basically is a picture of the guard rail that goes along the track on, on the dirt road.
Do we see that?
Sure.
Right. We can hand them down, give them back to people.
And I apologize, that should have been...
No, that's, that's fine.
And, and, and that is at the end of forty-four Caruth Street. It, 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 it's a guard rail, and, and that guard rail is very close to the house.
Yep.
The other picture that I would like to show you is a picture that was taken the day of the fire. And you can only see so far, you can only see so far on, 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 on the street. And the reason why you can't see beyond that point is because that's where the MBTA track is, and that's where the guard rail is. But to the left of that is forty-four Caruth Street, and right next, and right next door to that is my house.
Lucky you didn't get burnt out?
Well, this is actually a picture of the fire truck, taken from our window. It was taken from our window and, and our house. And, and yet, they wanna put, I don't know how many units, with a so, with a solid rock in the backyard, and just a few feet from the MBTA track. Now, I will let you know that the distance between my house and this house is about the same distance from the end of their house, the building, to the...
Train track.
To the, well, actually, to the...
Guard rail.
Guard, guard rail, about the same distance, that's how close it is. So, this was pretty close, but that's about the same distance as from the end of the house to the guard rail.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, let's pass it to you.
And this is another picture of a fireman, it actually looked like he's coming into our house, that's how close it is, he's actually going next door.
Like he wasn't coming in our house.
Yeah, 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 and that's how close it is, okay? And everybody has been very, very thorough, and I thank you very much for addressing all the issues that are a big concern of ours, okay?
Thanks.
But for some reason, for some reason, I just, there's not a picture there, and I, it was mentioned last time, but God forbid if anything were to happen, especially so close to the MBTA track, you know? And this is about the closest I think we could get as to what could possibly happen, okay? And this has actually happened from a, from this roof, it had some type of solar panel roofing, and stuff, stuff can happen. As you mentioned last time, there were an awful lot of variances. I think there are too many safety concerns involved here, that in my opinion, one variant is enough, and for that alone, I don't think the project should go through. One variant alone to me is enough, and I am strongly against it.
Thank you, sir.
And I thank you.
Counsel?
Aye. Chuck Valen, Ward Five City Councilor, two ninety-eight Fennel Street, Quincy. Just looking at the plans, this, this site has a lot of history, it goes all the way back to when Kirsten Hughes was the counselor, and there's been back and forth and kind of craziness going on there. But I think one of the things you don't have is you don't have the DPW thing, because in the DPW notes that were read on the Octo, August twenty-third meeting, I believe it was, it was the August meeting, it was in the summer. They spoke about the sewer hookups, the water hookups, it's at the end, it, if you're going more than a single-family home, you got problems. And those are issues that, if I remember correctly, in that DPW, but obviously, they don't have any, it's a different, I think they put it on the wrong, the wrong thing, there were issues in there. And I, I just, I just saw the plans tonight, and I haven't seen any of those issues addressed in there. And that's something that would be needed, needed to be addressed there and hasn't been addressed. I grew up, my grandparents on Caruth Street, so I'm very familiar with the street, and when I was there as a little kid in the sixties and early seventies, there wasn't much room there anyways, for cars.
You swim down, you're down, you're in the water.
No, that's before, I, I was, I was there before the T went in, I was there after the T went in. And before, before that, it used to be big trains going by that made a lot of noise, I would wake up at night if I was staying over at my grandparents' house. But it's, it's, it is a nice little neighborhood, and I just look at this, and it's four units, there's a lot of variances, and I know we talk about if you wanna do another meeting or something like that, but I probably won't be here. We'll go to a third counselor probably, which is Dan Minton, who takes over on January sixth for me. So, at that point, I won't be the counselor anymore, so it'll be kind of up to him, so I don't know when the meeting would be or anything like that, but at this point, with everything I got, I just gotta say I'm, I'm in opposition to it. I know something has to go in there, I wish I had seen these beforehand, I would have had a meeting with the neighborhood.
Boy, do you wanna have a meeting with the neighborhood?
Well...
Get their input, and come back in January, or you can't do it by December twelfth, it's just not that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not gonna be around December twelfth anyways, I'll be away, so I wouldn't even be able to be here.
Put it off to January, mid-January?
To, to mid-January, I mean, I can talk to Council Minton, because at that point, it's gonna be in his, in his domain, but I'd be more than happy to, to talk to him and see, see about setting up a meeting.
With the, with the neighborhood.
With the neighbors, because I don't even think the neighbors have had a chance to see the plans or anything, I realize...
No, I, I don't know, there was a lot here last time.
Yeah.
And when I saw no one had been here, I was wondering...
Yeah, I did, I did send out a le, I did send out a letter, I'm just wondering if it...
Right.
Yeah, you know...
Most people own on that street, I know there's renters, a couple renters.
There's a good percentage of that, it's about, probably about fifty-fifty, would I be right in saying that? Yeah, most of the media buddies are homeowners there.
Okay.
Most of the ones who are immediately around there. So, I did receive a couple of emails, a couple of phone calls, I just urge them, if you got something to say, please come, you know, to the board.
And that corner, it's, it's, it floods in that corner, it's just crazy, when it pulls up like two, three, I go down there and raid in.
There was problems when it was a single-family home.
Right.
And I know, I know the Fitzgeralds lived there before, nice family, and, you know, I, I don't know, I maybe, with all the trouble, if you just put a single-family there, you can probably sell it for a lot of money. The way the single families are going in Quincy right now, I don't know if that's, can return on their investment, but it is, it is tough traffic-wise, you know, we, we put up signs, I have the parking control people go by on a regular basis, issuing tickets and stuff like that, but it's just, you know, the more cars you put in there, the more problems you're gonna have. So, if the, if it's the wish of the board for me to have a meeting with the neighborhood, I would be more than happy to do it.
I mean, it is, usually, we hear from, like, our side was pretty full.
Yeah.
With a lot of tough people. So, now you think there's not many people here, they must have heard that a four is okay. That's the way I take it, when I'm sitting here and going, they didn't say nothing, they knew it was a four, I guess they're happy with the four. I don't know, we don't know, but when we don't see no one but two people the next day, you go, what, what happened to them? You know?
Yeah, I think there, there was a feeling the last time going out of here, I know, I know they did withdraw without prejudice, that people didn't think they would be back in two years, so maybe...
Oh, all right.
I did send out a letter, so I, I mean, I, I did send out, did you guys get my letter?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I did send out a letter to the neighborhood, once I saw it come back, I talked with Rob in the building department, he said, "Yeah, there's substantial changes, so they have a right to come back," so that's when I decided to send it out.
Understand that, right.
Yeah, but that was, that was kind of when people were walking out of here, they kind of, I think, unless you've been to the zoning board a lot, sometimes you might not follow.
You wouldn't, you would just think, yeah, they can't go back, right.
Okay.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
I believe this is my last time before you.
Thanks, brother.
So, thank you for everything.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you for volunteering the service you do for the city, thank you very much for spending these nights, believe me, I...
Yeah, you know.
Your whole fault, man.
And that's it. One or two things, do, do a vote, or put out another letter and have them, have them come back and... and have them, have them come back in four weeks of January? Have them come back in January? Let the neighborhood know?
I'd like to, I'd like to see the DPW letters, the one that.
Oh, yeah.
We didn't put it.
Even the other one's not, the other one's, it's in the other case, the old case.
Right.
We don't even have the old.
Counsel was mentioning that maybe there's some, some overlap, some parallels from that letter that should be.
Oh, oh, oh.
Should be considered in, in this application, and I don't know that.
Why don't we, why don't we mail out a new one of these? I'll get a new one, and we'll get it to you, and we'll put this off to January.
And the one that was partially written that.
Well, this is it here.
Is, so you have a corrected version?
No, this is, this is the one that.
Let's see, 180 units?
Yeah, 180 units.
That's right. I'd like to read the corrected version of that before I vote.
That's what I mean, so we'll put off to January?
Plus, I'd like to see the councilor sit down to see if they can come up with something more modest. You know what I mean? The new councilor coming in, Councilor Minton? Maybe give him a shot at a neighborhood meeting and get an idea of what's going on up there.
It's going to take him at least a while to get, so the end of, end of January. What do you got for the end of January?
Well, he can come in before he's actually sworn in, right?
January 23rd? No, I just want to. Yeah, he gets sworn in first week. Yeah. January 16th?
No, no.
9th to 23rd. 23rd then.
23rd.
Why don't we do that? We'll put this off to the 23rd of January. Let the council know if you want to have a meeting, or you want to meet with him and the new council, bring him in.
The new council.
And the three of us can sit down and. And then we got to get the updated letter from DPW because we know there's not 180 units coming in.
We hope.
Ma'am?
Just want to ask you a question.
Sure.
Want me to stand up there?
No, go ahead.
I'm just curious.
We already got your name and address now.
You got it. When they start blasting the rock down there, and my wall's cracked.
Right.
Who do I say?
You get an inspection before, we can put that in the record. You get an inspection of your house before they start there. And then they go, and they film your house. Takes a second to go in, film your house with cracks, foundation cracks.
It's frustration. The other question is, what, what happens when they juke something with the buster metal over there?
Oh, I know.
And big, big, big?
Yeah, that's, that's bigger than us.
No.
That's not going to be a buster.
You don't think so?
No.
The city's going to take a ride off.
No, I don't think that, but I just don't think it's.
What they're going to build, they're saying.
Charles questions when the folks who get paid.
Yeah, the people get paid. My counsel, those questions for the people get paid.
Thank you.
January 23rd?
January 23rd, yes.
ZBA dash 23, dash 70, Bonnie Tranfer variant, sue demolish the existing single-family home. Construct two, three-story, two-unit townhouse buildings on the premise numbered 44 Karoo Street, Quincy. Like to make a motion to continue to 12324.
And for a new DPW letter, can we mail?
With an update, with an updated DPW letter reflecting the correct amount of units.
The correction.
Second.
On the motion, standing in all in favor? Aye. Close, so move. Thank you. Thank you, counsel. ZBA 2382. Julie Via Pondo for a special permit to operate a large family daycare on the premises number 12 Summit Ave. The African representative here. Name and address for the record for you.
Julie Via Pondo, 12 Summit Ave, Quincy.
Now, why don't you tell us what you want to do and how long you've been in business over this?
Right now, I have six kids, and they say it's a, it's a playgroup. So it's not an eight-to-five kind of thing. It's a, I call it a prep to preschool. So it's for the two to three and a half, just to teach them to play together. Since COVID, kids weren't playing together. That's how this all began.
So it's a lodge, but you have a license for a lodge?
I, I have a license for up to 10 kids. I, I've run a, I'm a director of a daycare that has 25 kids, so I don't consider this large.
How long you say you're in business?
At my home, since March.
Since March, and before that?
Almost a year. I've been a director for 20 years of a child.
Okay, so you just started this in March yourself?
Yes, yes.
And any complaints at all from the neighbors or anyone?
None to me. I don't know.
I don't know. Mr. Carlin would let us know if there was anything we would have got back.
Most of the grandchildren of my neighbors have come to the playgroup, so. It's small. I have a park around the corner.
Well, six now, now you got 10 though, right? You could have 10.
Yes, yeah.
And it could be a regular daycare because you're licensed for that, correct?
It could, but I don't plan that.
But you do have a license.
I do have a license for it, yes.
I'm letting the DPW have your comments. This is a neighbor Kathleen Rabels. It can be written to the record. You can have a seat now.
Okay.
Right there, slide.
Number 12 Summit Ave.
One, one second. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? Second call, third call, follow up. We have a letter from DPW that has no comment. And there's letters here in favor.
Kathleen Rabels, I live at 20 Summit Ave, and Julie Via Pondo is an excellent neighbor. My children grow up with their children, and I've always known her to be a caring person. When she started Julie's playgroup, I was so happy that my grandson could attend. His first time being with other children because of COVID was a total success because of Julie's sweet nature. I am happy to support Julie's efforts to bring a few more children into play.
Oh, that's so nice.
Now, COVID is a, something I wasn't thinking about, that's for sure. There's no other letters, no one wants to make a comments? Anyone else want to speak? Call out hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor.
In favor.
Two questions.
Yep.
Are we voting for the?
Right here, large daycare license. That's her license she carries from the state.
Yeah, but she's not going to, she doesn't plan to have a daycare. She plans to have a playgroup.
Yeah.
They consider it. It's all, all under.
Yeah, so it'll be under 10, but she has a license up to 10.
Now, the second question I have is, is your yard fenced in in the back there? It's a very long rectangular yard, looks like from the, from the drawing. So it's all fenced?
Yes.
Okay.
Lock them in.
Or God tell us.
They can't get out. As long as they can't get out, we're all set. So Brian?
I'm good.
Have a more complaint. Lock them up. Before they get out.
ZBA dash 23, dash 82, Julie Via Pondo for a special permit to operate a large family daycare on the premise of number 12 Summit Ave, Quincy. Make a motion to accept this presentation.
Second.
On the motion, standing in all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close, so move. Motion in turn, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.